So we will call the meeting of the Westminster School Board to order at 6:02 PM. And we'll begin with introductions, really just for the public again, not that everybody doesn't know us, but at this point in time, but still, I prefer it to the public who might be watching. Karen, I'll ask you to begin, okay? Karen Blanchard, Westminster School Board.
Jim Vazina, Finance.
Andy Haas, Superintendent of Schools.
Cheryl Charles, Chair of the Westminster Board.
I'm Ashley Dunne, if I share the Westminster Board.
Liz Hardy, Central Westminster Center School.
Great, and thanks everyone for being here tonight. I think we do have, I'll call for an adjustment to the agenda, one that I think was raised with us earlier, is to review and approve the minutes from January 19th. That's just actually a typo in the agenda tonight. So that's one adjustment that I would make. Any other adjustments to the agenda? Would you repeat that adjustment? Point number five, to review and approve the minutes from January 19th rather than January 15th. We will approve those. Any other adjustments?
I'm just looking through Nicole's notes here, I'm sorry. So.
Well, I can add that under policies, we're adding B3.
Thank you.
And we also have the tuition policy, which she sent out, that this war developed and really posted for public comment as long ago as last December. So we're just picking that up again.
So we're adding, so sorry, adding B3 under 8A.
Uh huh.
And then.
The tuition, the category stays the same, review and approve policies. But since we're listing them, we'll add D3 plus Westminster's proposed tuition policy.
I don't think we numbered that yet, so.
That's correct. Well, and it's only the Westminster policies that are certain about to begin.
Yeah, I'll look for a way to number it.
Okay.
For once we, we're working on that this coming week.
Okay. Any other adjustments to the agenda? Any communications and public comments? Looks like I'll not. All right, then the first, next actual order of business is to review and approve the minutes from January 19th meeting, which Nicole did send out to us this morning. Are there any corrections? In the minutes? And I've intercanned a motion to approve.
Move.
Okay, so Charlie Henderson has moved to approve the minutes. My second, okay. And all those in favor?
Good.
Now, and I see Margie's brought as well, okay.
Hi. Thank you.
All right. Then we're going to go right into reports and the finance. And it's a report, what? No, she didn't, I'm so sorry, thank you. Charlie, I just made a point, Margie, that when you've got a moment, if you could introduce yourself to the group, but we'll wait till you get set. I have that totally, okay. You want to fight like all that? Margie, if you want to take no more, just to introduce yourself, for the purposes of Sky TV and all of that.
I'm Margie, Westminster Board Member.
Perfect, thank you so much. And now we're moving into report from the Finance Director, Mr. Vazina.
Okay. I'm looking at the function page, which if you flip just from the title page back. This is important because I just noticed page numbers are not on here. But, but in the stack of information, it's all rows and. So if you have any questions, you can go on the left side to the row.
I've got page numbers on mine, but.
Well, the rest didn't pick up.
Okay.
So I just want to, on the function page. And I'll say. Most encumbrances have been made, meaning if there's salaries from now until the end of the year, we've encumbered those salaries based on the contract. If there's health benefits, we've encumbered the health benefits. So you essentially have most larger items encumbered, and it gives us the ability to look at, see where we are. And at the bottom right, you can see there's a number of 545,000. And that's just what looks like you could end up with as a favorable balance. So I think that, I think we'll hit close. I'm trying to look at where some of the holes might be. Substitutes, we will be, right now it's in the SU, and it will be billed back to each entity. I did notice that under the School Board, the audit has not been billed as yet, but will be. There's $9,000 there, and that is on page, well, I don't know what page, but it's line item 122. Row 122? You can find that. And again, some of the, some of the balance, if you go down through, I mean, some of the balances, you can see there are some larger numbers. And contingency fund, the School Board has brought in 46,000 that still has not been used or taxed. So, and that will go right to the bottom. And again, long-term debt, although it doesn't show it here, there should be an encumbrance of six, and I'm looking on line 203. And there's another 6455 that will hit the interest in May. So it doesn't show up there, but I think the half million dollars, I think is a good number. So Liz, as you find places where you see gaps, we will move some monies to cover. And, and as you, you know, indicated in here, there really isn't a contract, a facilities contracted line, per se. Most of the facilities, they use a 4, 422, you know, a 4, 431, 425. So there's really not a contracted services line per se, but we will move the money and make sure that you've got enough to cover what you need for wood chips or anything else for the playground area.
Yeah, in the past, we've had like a wood chips line, and the contracted services would be for like an electrician or a plumber or somebody that we needed to contract in. Would that just come out of the operations of facilities, 2610? That'd be under that umbrella?
I mean, for this year.
Yeah.
Sure can.
Okay.
Next year, you will have.
I'll have, I'll have a line for it, okay. Oh, it'll be, I can just find a line that makes most sense, maybe non-technology repairs?
Sure.
Okay. The 5431.
And I think with a balance like this, I certainly would recommend that come May timeframe, maybe we want to make sure the oil tank is filled. Because I mean, when you have the money like that, you can say, well, geez damn, shouldn't we wait until next fall and see what the price is? I would say, you know, it'll soften, but I don't, I don't know that it's going to soften a lot. So it's one of those things that, that I certainly would love to be able to fill every oil tank in the district if we had funds.
Westminster's going to help everybody out. We appreciate that.
Other towns that have surpluses, yeah. West doesn't have to do a lot. But anyway, thank you, are there any questions for Jim? Or did you have other points?
The only thing I want to point out, revenue is on the last page.
Yeah.
And.
You don't want to.
I think. Despite the hiccup with the state, I think money's starting to flow now. I think you're going to balance out fine on the revenue side. We are getting interest on some of the monies now, so that'll show up at some point in time when we, when we end the year. So I think you're doing fine all the way around.
I've got some questions, but let me see if others, Karen, if we have any. I mean, I did see the line item that said wood pellets. Yeah, operation, and you mentioned that it's always been there, and so I just. Yeah. Let me see, I mean, Margie has any questions for Jim Vazina about the finance report? Okay? If you do, just say so later on. Charlie, any questions from you?
I just want to hear on the revenue page, which line is the money we have from our district? Or any kids recovering from the district, or are they not?
It would be on, on, well, it would be on line eight, where the money would go.
I see, but we're still having.
Right, right.
Actually, I wanted to come back to that, not that, but thank you. So a couple of things from me, and then if others have additional questions, please don't hesitate. Did you have any, Liz?
No, I think I'm clear, yeah, thank you.
So kind of looking through them, the first thing that caught my eye, let me go back to, you talked about the substitutes, it's line five, the 37,000, that's an encumbrance, and you're saying that we actually have substitutes, and this will be billed through the supervisory union, and that's why, so we have had substitute teachers. We've been using the budget line, okay.
And if, if the superintendent will entertain next year, I'm hoping that maybe we can do the substitutes as an assessment, only because, well, there's a lot of rock and rolling with the subs, and I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of difficulties because sometimes it's a partial. An employee can work at many different districts. So it, it really isn't.
So the reason, I learned this last year, how it got set up this way, is if a substitute subs here at this building on Monday, and then subs at the middle school on Tuesday, and then at the high school on Wednesday, and then in Grafton on Thursday, and then as a case manager, you know, special ed teacher on Friday, they would have to get five separate paychecks. And so at some point, long before Jim came on, they were getting funneled where they were getting all paid out of the one, because that way they also didn't get, you know, five W2s and stuff like that at practice times. And so then the billbacks had to happen, and that's, and that's where you caught, like that issue wasn't happening previously. So, you know, Jim has suggested this idea of assessment, and I think it might be the right way to go because it would probably be the least disruptive to everybody and the cleanest.
So thank you, that's one question there on that page. Then if you're on this, on the same page, and you go down to line 25, 26, 27, we've talked about this before, 25 is actually the early education tuition to private. But if you look at 24 and you look at 26, those are the grade seven and eighth grade tuitions. And it looks like the tuition to public, line 24, that's Bellis Falls Middle School, and they have billed us for the full year now. Is that correct? That's where that.
That's correct.
Why, so we've got $400 left, but at least all of that, that bill is done, and that would debt 21,000 almost per student.
Right.
Then the line 26 is some of our private schools, and I'm not sure that they have all completed their billing for the year. That would be the Grammar School and the Compass School is two examples.
Right, right. I, for some reason, I think Compass School did.
Maybe, I've seen some recently, and so they may have. But, but what this does is show us that we're, at this point in time, you know, a hundred thousand over budget there. Yes, we've got a half million potential surplus that you're looking at.
Yep.
But I wanted to point out to us that we just had our joint meeting with the Union Elementary School District, and it was the case that our 2019 surplus that was voted on by the voters does bring us back to Westminster, the former revenue, about $85,000 for seventh and eighth grade tuition, which can help us with this budget year. That doesn't yet show up in our revenue.
Right.
But it will.
Yes.
And so, but just as we watch this, and this is something as we move into town meeting, and we, you know, ask the voters to vote on this, one of the points we're making is that seventh and eighth grade tuition really varies. And so we can point it out in this year's budget, but we can point to the value of reserves, and we're going to be asking for additional reserve, reserve money. That make sense? Yeah.
So we have an article of the, of setting aside the previous surplus, but that's very perfect.
Yes.
So we've got both the current year's surplus and the possible bonus payments, and last year's surplus.
We have 2019, it goes as far back as that, but we just got that cleaned up in terms of the record keeping around it, because that was money that was proportionately belonging to the old Union Elementary. And now that we're no longer part of that, and those monies have not been spent, and we're able to bring them over.
So we have a surplus, surplus, aren't we? Because we're not going to spend three sources on this one.
No, no, but the surplus, the reserve fund will stand because it will carry once it's in a reserve fund.
And I'm hoping in the future years, we're going to know and post exactly what reserve funds are in and how much interest they've earned over the year.
Perfect, yeah.
So we've got to get to that point.
Yeah, thank you, Jim, that's so exciting, really, to get this kind of progress. So we've been, you know, this is all a part of the kind of cleanup from the last several years before Jim got here, and Liz helped us out with all of this. So moving ahead, a couple of others, see what else I have, some of which you had marked, and you're circling a couple of things in here, like the excess to the special ed, it's not, yeah, the special ed, excess, it's line 41. And that, we're not spending this year, and that's an example of something you proposed that we take out of next year's, which we did.
And it may be money for this year that Liz can assess and move if she needs to, you know, she has some gaps.
Right, that's correct. So in the contingency fund, we didn't, and then I, looking at the revenue page, something else that doesn't yet show here, or doesn't, are the monies that are in the Union Elementary School with budget, I mean, bank accounts, and haven't yet been transferred to the Westminster?
That's correct. I just will say, when we first got out of Community Bank, we had to be careful because we were trying to get checks that were in the process of being cashed, and make sure there was sufficient monies left in it. And so at that time, we looked at what we had, took a guess as to how much we'd need, and I think we put a million dollars into Westminster's, knowing it was a good break. And, and so we've got to reconcile that whole piece as well.
How much should we talk about, how much might come back?
I'm not sure at all, Charlie, at this point, we.
Well, if you just think about the surplus monies alone, it's well more than $100.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and they're not in.
Is that was money, or is it something additions and stuff?
In addition to the surplus money, there, but mostly I'm thinking about surplus monies that are still sitting over in the Union Elementary School District bank account.
And I think I've said this before, is that I am going to have Samantha Robles, who is our auditor, with me, and I want her to go through, because I think this is too, we need the exact amount, and I don't want to guess. So we're going to have her here when we separate that out.
That's great. So I had, I'd like to ask you about this, maybe we should do it between now and town meeting, maybe it doesn't need to be addressed here, but as we prepare for the informational meeting on February 25th with the public, and then town meeting, one of the things that I've been trying to understand is the tax rate, as well as what the voters are going to be looking at in terms of the budget itself. The current, the budget for right now for Westminster is 4.6 million. We're proposing 5.1, and at the same time, we're proposing to reduce it by 300,000. So it's not a huge big change, given that we're, we're asking or making that recommendation. But when I look at the tax rates and I look at past years for Westminster, it's actually going down. It's like 1.41 or 1.44 versus a few years ago, it was 1.7 something. Does that allow us to say to the public that the actual tax rate is going down?
I will say this, I mean, I think truly Westminster's in a unique and favorable position against other towns within the state of Vermont. Most have had to increase 8%, and most are seeing a higher increase than 8% in their budgets. But, but you're not. So I just think overall, and again, looking at the pressures, you had a settlement in the teachers, you had a settlement in the support staff, a 12.7 increase in the health insurance, which is huge. And you've still been able to hold that down to 6% for me. I think that's a home run.
Thank you, and we all need to be able to convey this as we talk with the public. Thank you.
Okay.
I think that's it for questions from me right now. Thank you very much. Liz, the principals report.
Yeah, absolutely.
And we, yeah, we probably in the wood. No other finance related thing tonight. Thank you for your time last night, thank you for your time tonight.
All right, thanks.
See you soon. Same time. Enjoy on a little bit of the.
I have a quick question for Jim, real quick.
Okay.
Are you coming to the informational session, Jim?
By all means.
Oh, great, okay, perfect.
Great, thank you. Good night, Jim.
Good night.
So for the principals report, for the past 30 days, our average daily attendance has been 94%.
What's up?
Yeah. Yeah, so yeah, things are passing through, and kids aren't as thick as we saw this fall. Winter sports, obviously, has been up and going. We have one more session that'll happen right after February break. It's really been wonderful, watching students learn new skills, gaining confidence, and persevering to try new things. We had our winter concert in January again, and it was really successful. We had many families come, support our school, we received very positive feedback from families, and we'll be planning another concert this spring, so more to come on that. As I mentioned last month, we had a tabletop exercise last week with our crisis team and the local first responders. So representation from the Sheriff's Office, the State Police, and Westminster Fire, along with Sunny Erickson, who's from the Vermont Emergency Management Team. Sunny led us through a school crisis scenario where we discussed how we would respond. It was super beneficial to hear perspectives from the responders, and to clarify details such as confirming that they have up-to-date school maps, confirming how they would access our building, how would we work with the town. This is definitely something that I would be interested in doing annually, just to make sure that we are all on the same page and we continue that connection with our first responders. And before COVID, and before me, the Westminster had a somewhat of an advisory program called Longboats. Our staff is looking to reinvent that, we will be, we call it now the Connection Crew, so it connects us with our core values, which is community connection and inclusion. And with this rebranding and a commitment to our core values, it's a version of advisory where each staff member has a small group around five to six students where they connect and engage with each other. We had our first Connection Crew last Friday afternoon, groups met, got to know each other. Each member created a hand, and they shared how they feel connected to our school and to their friends. So we look forward to having more opportunities throughout the year and the years to come. So the groups are mixed grade level, and every adult in the building participates. The other news is we have, we have shade sale news. Our nature-based ed committee meets, that meets every other week with the other committees, works with Jenny Kessler from Good Connects. So Jenny was able to connect us with Shade Sales of Canada, who donated the school a 500 square foot shade sale for our garden. And La Valley's will be donating posts to install the shade, the sun shade sale. And we're hoping this provides ample shade and really a base for our nature-based learning out by the gardens. We have some plans about where and how we're going to install that. You, I guess you can fold it, and you can stretch it in different ways to make it the size you really want. So we're really excited about that. And that's just one of the benefits of working with Good Connects, because they connect you with different grant opportunities or donation opportunities like this one. That's the, that's the news.
Any questions here, any questions? No, just great.
Yeah.
Is it Connection Crew or Cruze?
Crew, there's many, so Connection Cruze.
I didn't know if it was a play on the longboat, a Cruze, like, like a Disney crew.
No, I think it was like a crew, like your crew, like your group.
Your crew, yeah.
Now they start asking.
The three C's are community connection and inclusion are our three core, the three C's. Yeah, that's support we did last year.
So we haven't, we haven't talked about this for a while, and I want this to be a general question, and Andy, you may be able to help with it too. Even in our community, we have children and families who are technically homeless. So what's our approach? I know that one of the wonderful things about what a school does for a community is having eyes and ears to be able to report that and to be able to provide support. And we have the federal support for this, as well as local. But can you just generally describe what our policy is when we know about a family and that?
So when we, you can add on, my basic understanding at the building level is that when we believe a family is homeless, we, our school counselor puts her referral in to our community event coordinator, which is Shelley Wilson here at the SU. She connects the fam, connects with the family to make sure they're still able to access their education as far as either providing transportation, or sometimes if they're displaced, like if they are living in a, they're living in a hotel in Brattleboro, we can either provide transportation or we can refund mileage to the family. And we connect them with a home-to-school liaison who can help them find potentially permanent housing. But if they are declared homeless through the school year, they can continue to come to our school even if they're displaced out of the district.
So to add on a little bit, a little more on the backend, there's what's called a bid waiver, and it's not the same type of bid, but it's a best determination. And so in the scenario that Liz just talked about, a student maybe in Brattleboro, we would meet with Brattleboro and make the determination, is it better for that student? Because when you're homeless, the student has the right to continue to come to their home school.
Right.
But it may be in their best interest to attend a school that's closer to where they're currently living. So there's a behind-the-scenes discussion of what's best, the families are involved, and so there's some determination that goes on. And then just as Liz said, typically, you know, Shelley has her home-to-school liaison group, and there's an individual assigned to Westminster who then would get involved with that family and find out what those needs are. So if they need food, we can, we can provide assistance there. If they need clothing, we work to help get clothing. So like if a student wants to, we did this in the fall with some students where they wanted to play a sport, we'll get them cleats, we'll get them, you know, so we want to make sure that we're minimizing that impact so they can, as. We'll get them, you know, so we want to make sure that we're minimizing that impact so they can, as, as it'll be available to access schools.
Yeah, so our health liaison that works with Westminster, her name is Amy Newton. And we meet with Amy on a weekly basis. Our mental health team here makes with her to get updates on families that are currently homeless. What's the, um, what do they still need? What are their next steps? What's going on? And for us to maybe um, clue her in on potential needs of our building that are popping up.
That, that's your, the cares, right?
Yes.
So that's, um, and we put that out, I, I, in my superintendent's report, there's a link to the description of cares and the, and the cares team. So that is all part of what that is. So it's not, we try to minimize the stigmatization of homelessness and just it's a student that you need to take care of.
So let me ask a question, which is if I know of somebody, do I come to you, Liz? Or I go to, who do I?
Or, or if you happen to see Shelley, at the, you can mention it to her.
But my connection would be more, I think, here or to you, something like that.
And there's a whole, there, there, again, a behind the scenes process of trying to determine, determine is a person homeless in, in that sense. Um, and it's, you know, we try to look at what's the best for the child in that, in that sense.
Right, well, I, I really appreciate that. I've had some community questions and uh, you know, and it, it's, it's the case that I think everybody is working to provide, one, confidentiality and privacy of the family is incredibly important. At the same time, that there's real support here. And so given that there's a system, if someone can confidentially talk to somebody else, then there will be a reach out uh, to the family that um, to provide whatever assistance might be needed. So I think that's important for the community broadly to know it's.
And I, and I think it, it can be as simple as, you know, um, something just happened with the family and they, they, they either had to move out of their house or something happened to their home and they're now doubled up with another family, that could potentially become a determination of homelessness.
Right.
Um, that even if it's a short term, we can try and intervene at that time. So.
Right, but even, even moving in with other family members, as you said, or, or friends and neighbors, it's not like they're necessarily on the street.
Right.
But they, but they are.
Right, that's why I wanted to say that. It's not necessarily just, I guess that stereotype that we have over our head of, you know, like you said, someone's out on the street. It could be someone who like has doubled up or is um, living at, living at the roadway or whatever it is. And uh, so we want to make sure that.
Yeah, and it's good to get the messaging out that the child can continue schooling here. Because that's always the concern if they, you know, if they are going to Brattleboro or Springfield or the roadway in Rockham. Like if they would have to change schools, which is hugely disruptive for kids. They're already going to.
We've had some families where we're, we're talking like Brooklyn. And that's what I'm, that's what we get that bid going and it's like, what is best for this, this child? And um, or we've had families that even have had to move across the river or to New Hampshire. We try and work with New Hampshire on that. So.
So that they may still, as it said, whether the, the school of origin or something like that.
So they can continue this.
So Liz, you mentioned roadway. Are, are you talking about the motel that's up in? Does that tend to be like the place in Brattleboro, which has been for people who need?
From my experience.
I, 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 no, I just, yeah, I just buy it and I thought.
So a lot of times the state has vouchers. I think roadway is one of those areas that accepts vouchers. So.
Yeah, yeah, that's great. Okay. Any comments or questions from you, Margie, as we move on? Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you, Liz, as always. All right. So new business, uh, the February twenty fifth information meeting. We've started getting the word out about that, that simply are creating an opportunity for townspeople, for voters and interested others as far as that goes to come. And our plan is to be here on Saturday, February twenty fifth from nine to eleven. And um, I will go ahead and order some requests, some coffee and pastries and stuff like that from our farm to school program from Harley. So we'll have a little bit of that. And we'll make sure that we've got the um, Zoom option for people who.
We can do that, yes. Thank you for putting the bug in my ear. I'll make sure I have it in my, in my truck.
Wait, we will need that. And um,
What room is it?
In, in the cafeteria. And my preference, as you look at it, as you go out tonight, I think setting it up in rounds like this is conversational and less formal. I don't think we need a table for the board to kind of be a bread. I'd rather we kind of stand up.
Stick with the cafeteria tables that are round? Okay, not, not bringing other tables. I just want to make sure.
I think the way it's set up right now is fine and then a place for coffee and pastry, that kind of thing. We might need a microphone system, but I'm not sure. You know, we could have anywhere from five to forty people. I don't think we'll have a hundred or two hundred.
Liz, if you, um, we have a mobile system at the SU.
Okay.
Small one, you know, but would work for this. And then the other is, do you have a mobile board?
Yes.
Okay.
Mobile board too.
One of these, one of these, or do we need to bring out screen and a projector?
But you've got one.
Yes, that's one in the library we can bring in.
Okay, that's great. I wondered about being able to offer for those who might be here. And again, we could have almost no people, but it's important that we offer this uh, opportunity. Um, for those who might want to stay for a few minutes after they have a tour of the building. And if we have lots of them, then we can have smaller groups. You could, you know, we could and could, but I don't, I doubt. We can put it out to the, the families. And then I think around um, uh, around the, the agenda for it, it's really to create an opportunity for people to ask questions about the budget and the articles in advance of town meeting. I don't think we go through all the articles like we will at town meeting. I think we, uh, we can provide some basic information for people and highlight a few things. I went into the parent teacher group tonight and um, just kind of highlighted the categories of proposed uses for the surplus. Um, you know, the capital improvements, the tuitions, um, the um, energy efficiencies, renewables, that, that's a big part of it. And then fourth, the enhancing of outdoor and other learning opportunities. So the, and the, starting though with the reduction of what the taxpayers pay. So rather than going through every article in detail, to try to give them just a few brief opening comments. But I wondered whether various board members wanted to speak to uh, any of the topics that are there. Whether, again, it might be the importance of having a reserve for capital improvements, the importance of the um, trying to increase our energy efficiencies and move to renewables. Or do we want to just be available for questions? And I, I don't know how much structure you all want.
I don't know. I haven't thought about it actually. Okay.
I'm, I'm a little confused, but on the one hand, I thought I heard you say the book was for the articles. But then the list of things that you said we might talk about was potentially in the articles. So it seems to me, we really don't want to talk about the budget itself because there's so many lead items and it'll just be harassed. I would want the articles are the thing to focus on. Because if there's a few of them, they're maybe controversial, maybe not. Um, and, and there is a reasoning behind it and it's a relatively bandwidth set of conversations.
I, I actually agree with that. My, I wasn't clear enough in my statement. I mean that unlike town meeting where we will each be asked to speak to and read an article. And then the public votes on that one after discussion. In this case, I think we broadly talk about the gist of the articles. And I was summarizing the four major areas of the, uh, five actually, when we kind of talk about uh, tax reduction. So instead of going through the articles one by one like we will at town meeting, a broad description of them and, and discussion.
Yeah. And, and one of them, I think, is, which isn't an article, is this is the tax, this is the budget. And by the way, folks, Ashley, the tax rate's coming down and he is lying, blah, blah, blah. So that you, you don't get, you know, stick your shoulders it's mediated by the fact that your middle rates come down. Is that, that what you, is that part of what you want to say?
Yeah, uh, as, as long as we're accurate. And I think that's how it's looking to me. But I want to make sure that.
I think it would be helpful before that meeting to have sort of an agenda, so you know, that we can talk through, so I'm, you know, and I think everything. How it's going to go and, you know, sort of the topics. That would be helpful for me. That, um, you know, just, it's a two hour period of time. So I, I was, I was struggling with the idea of a meeting, but if we're only doing this as a planning meeting and we're not taking any action, we could have board members gathered to plan for that. That, that it's illegal.
That is correct, yes.
That, that's the, that's the only thing that this whole thing we have. We don't have to take as much time on it tonight.
Okay, if we can do that in some.
We should, because people will come in trips and drives unfortunately and they'll ask the same questions over and over.
And maybe having a loose agenda might help people like fall into it at this point. But if they can't make it, they know that, I'm, I'm wondering, I don't know, I mean. Because I, I agree with Charlie. If someone comes in at the second hour and you just spend half an hour in the beginning talking about something and they bring it up again, are you going to do it cycle back, circle back in with it? So.
Well, let me then draft something. And if each of you board members have a topic that you might want to help address. As an example, Margie, you might want to help with that whole renewable energy piece that you've been doing more work on than, than some of the others. You know, Charlie in particular.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm up for uh, like, maybe each table should take, like maybe each table should have a couple board members that are talking about certain articles, you know? Just so that people, if they want to talk about articles one through six, they go over here, articles, you know? And then at the door, we could have a stack of the articles, hard copy, and people can be reading them. I don't know.
So I, I have an idea that I know it was possible, but it would be really nice if we could all meet before this meeting. Somehow, I don't, you know, that the.
If you're having a, just a planning session.
Yeah, yeah, just a planning session, right? That's all.
Probably not making any decisions.
Right. So maybe we can figure out a time that that can happen.
It's also an opportunity for us to rehearse the objections that might come up at town meeting. And anticipate those and maybe practice our responses at this earlier meeting. So I think it'd be good to play a devil's advocate with ourselves a bit.
Yeah, before that meeting, before this meeting.
I don't know if this is the right uh, time to bring this up, but I have also had several questions from um, community members as to why the pre-K stuff isn't on, on an article. You know, we had sent out that survey to all community members about pre-K. And then I think community members were expecting that to be on the articles. They're not understanding that it's at the SU level and that they won't have to pay for it in their taxes. I think they thought they would and were ready to vote on that when we, you know, when we sent out that little survey. So that is one thing that I, I think maybe we should clarify during the meeting. But we can talk about that at the planning committee meeting for this.
Well, that, that was an SU uh, level pre-K survey.
Yeah, I know. There's just confusion about it. They're like, where, where's the pre-K? People are like all concerned now. Like we sent out the survey and then there was no further communication about it. So I don't, there, people are expecting that to be on our town meeting stuff and it's not, because it's SU, but they don't understand that.
You're saying, Margie, that they didn't get any follow-up information about that?
No follow-up.
It covered it on SU meeting, but maybe we'll have to check on that.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, I, I, I mean, I honestly, Jennifer and I are meeting next week to put together like packet things and um, stuff to go out to parents and, and everything. So it's just some of it, yeah, right. I don't, I, I guess maybe I go to so many meetings that I, I know we've talked about it, exa, you know, in nauseam. And even at this meeting, we've talked about it.
Extensively, it's true. So that, you know, Andy will check on what follow-up has already occurred and there's more coming. And to your point, at our informational meeting for Westminster, we can address it. No questions.
Yes, yes. Maybe Andy, when you meet with Jennifer, uh, I think sending out something particularly to the people who did uh, answer back the survey would be great. I, I mean, also, you know, whoever, but like particularly the people who answered the survey probably want some follow-up. Thanks.
The referral to Margie is quite a problem coming from it. Just, I think maybe people don't understand the difference between expenditures that call to Westminster directly versus SU services which we pay for indirectly. It might be good to educate people on which, you know, which ones are. The transport isn't billed directly, nor is special air and so on. Um, I don't know how much that matters, but I think it might be useful for people to know that distinction. Things that we share with the towns, things that we don't.
Agreed.
Do we want a short? I hate the idea of going to PowerPoint.
I guess the only, the only worry I have there is not knowing what all the questions are. And if we're, are, do we create more confusion?
Yeah.
You know, like, and if you're trying to have just some kind of very open conversation.
Right.
It, it might be, you know, uh, because we can take notes and we can actually publicize those responses and an FAQ also.
So, so let's quickly say probably not a PowerPoint. Let's have it really be community oriented, conversational. If we do get enough questions at warrants and FAQ, we'll frequently ask questions and then responses. We can do that and we can have it for town meetings.
Yeah, I, I would probably, we try and do those answers out even sooner to get them.
Yeah.
You know, so people can.
A yes and, let's do, you know, get them right away. This is sort of an aside, but a little bit of what you were saying, Margie, about communication. And it was about the Bellas Falls stuff that came up at SU. And how the Bellas Falls Board, Bellas Falls High School Board makes decisions about things that the SU doesn't make decis, I mean, doesn't make decisions about. And people were unclear about that, actually.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, right. So those kinds of, um, that kind of information that we, we sort of take for granted a little bit. And that's, I think, when we have our, sort of planning meeting for the planning meeting, um, might be to think about, you know, what kinds of things, you know, maybe it's just the kin, you know, the preschool stuff, um, or pre-K stuff that you were talking about.
Well, it might, it might, uh, I don't mean, I'm just saying, not a PowerPoint. But if there is something about like, okay, what are SU services, what are not, we can have like a one cheater ready just to hand out at that meeting as opposed to.
Yeah, that would be great.
Like a lecture about it or a topic.
That would be great. Okay.
I think that would be super helpful, Andy. Thank you.
In terms of a time for a planning meeting, you know, we're here on Thursday night and it's the sixteenth. Uh, I don't have my calendar, but the next Thursday, even though we're having this event two days later, what, what makes sense to you?
I could do that Thursday.
Would that be sufficient and does that work? It may not be a long meeting. It would just be a planning meeting. Um, yeah, that would work for me. What time are we talking about?
I, I was just, I mean, which is fine. I'm not, I'm going to be around, but I just, or Liz, I just wanted to make sure.
It's spring break, but.
Oh, that's the issue. That's what I forgot. Oh, and now I remember there's a, actually there's a family. Yeah, and can, can people, so you're not working, there's no buses. Can we, thank you, can we meet during the day? Any day?
I, I cannot, oh, I, can you not that day? That, that night, I just remember there's a family memorial service. But then we don't have to do night. I mean, I can do day.
Yeah, I'm planning the day, but I don't think Liz and Andy need to be here.
I don't know if I can do during the day. I just, I don't know that yet. Um, but I can definitely do morning uh, or evening.
When you say morning, what time you talking?
Like I could probably do nine AM. But I probably can't do midday or afternoon.
Make that ten.
Could you do ten? Could you do ten?
Uh, uh. Uh, I don't know yet.
Let let's let's, I've forgotten that it's great holiday, the children are everywhere, which is wonderful, and some people are traveling. Let me get back to you if I may, and we'll just do it by email, we'll try to figure that out.
Sure, I can do it, I mean, during the week, day before, I mean, in other words, I can do mornings. Most of those days.
But I mean, if we, so if we, if we can leave that for now, thank you for all that good discussion. Our next big topic uh is about reviewing and approving policies. And it's the case that since Westminster was reinstated as a school district, we've not acted on any of the district policies, and some of these are literally required. And there's been an active supervisor union policy committee that Priscilla Lambert chairs, that Charlie's a part of, and that Margie's been attending uh those meetings as well, frequently, not always, but frequently. And I was just um concerned that I thought it was a good idea for us to catch up, uh, have this board actually approve um all these policies that have already been approved by the supervisor union board, and and they are required, uh, and they've been deliberated by this committee that again Charlie serves on and Margie's been attending as well. So my actual recommendation is.
I recommend, I mean, most of these.
My recommendation would be that we entertain a motion to approve them all en masse without going through them all in detail. Given again that that they're standard, actually.
Yes, all and all of them are um required policies, um, except for the um one that you all um.
Have separated that one out.
Um.
E three.
No, B three is required, um, one.
Okay, I meant to the, well.
The tuition.
Yeah, the tuition one. Um, and and just to add that all the other districts have approved them as well as the SU, so um it just is a technicality from you all being created.
So I move that we we accept a little more.
Okay, I second that motion, okay.
And uh, no, all right, so it's moved and seconded, all those in favor, I saw Margie's thumb up.
Aye.
Aye, all right, unanimous. There's one small thing I would like, uh, Priscilla and the team, Andy, you can carry this, it's just that there's a typo in the uh policy D one A on grade advancement, uh, retention and such, and on the the data adopted page, replacing G nine, adopted October twenty eighth, and then it says two zero nine zero nine. If the.
I actually saw that, yes, I I thought I got it correct.
If it could be fixed that.
Yeah, that's that's the typo, so we can get that, yeah.
So it doesn't require, and then if we would like as a board um to revisit the tuition policy that Margie worked a lot on that we've discussed in detail here, we might want to entertain that a motion to approve it at this time, I have, I'd like to have a little bit of discussion about it, but um, what's your pleasure, everybody?
Could we quickly read through it again, I just feel well.
Sure, this is um, I pull it out, I do, I'm just trying to. Get it, this you need someone, okay. So we put this out for review last December, it's uh the admission of non-resident students.
That was that was sent out and.
It was.
I'm reading it, yeah.
Right, so it was sent out, do you want, let me hand it to you, would that refresh you?
Do you have to separate or no? If we're going to vote today, we should hear it, I think.
This, this, it's the policy of the Westminster School Board to admit non-resident students to Westminster Center School when space is available and in compliance with all federal and state laws and regulations governing tuition payment and non-discrimination. The big idea here is that there needs to be room, and the principal uh advises us, and we're asking that the sending district pay tuition, that's and the only exception that we've written into this policy is that any non-resident student whose parent or guardian works at the Westminster Center School shall be automatically granted admission to the Westminster School, subject to space available, with a written request to the Westminster School Board. Um, and tuition would be requested from the sending school or a school of residence, chapter of residence, but isn't required. And 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 my question, we don't have a motion on the floor yet, but my, the spirit of this is to say that if a child and family want a child to come here, we're asking the district where that child lives to pay tuition, that's actually the big idea here. With an incentive to people who choose to work in the building, or we hire, to allow their children uh to be able to come here.
So to be clear, that's the some, some of the two applications we've had so far, the the one we would have accepted and the other one we would not have accepted because unless Grafton would be paying.
That is correct, that is correct, and I just, I just wonder, given my own past experience on this board where we did allow um, a child to go to a different school, that's not the question here, so I shouldn't confuse myself with that. I just wondered if there's any room for any exceptions, that's the thing that I I still kind of struggle with a little bit.
I think this is, I mean, I think that frankly, it's covered. You know, it's much clear about the requirements of kids coming and people who, what you were just said, people who work at in the school, being allowed to have their children here is wonderful, I mean, is appropriate, I should say that. I don't know, I think it's really very well written, frankly.
Here's a scenario, um, child to be at the school for several years, the family moves to the next town, and says, I want to stay with my friend.
In the sixth grade.
But they don't have a a parent working here.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, a lot goes out to that person with that family, but are we, this is a cold no. I mean, that's, as written so far, yes, it's a cold no.
As it's written, it's a cold.
I mean, unless the other town pays.
Unless the other town will pay.
Well, I, can I have some clarity on that too, like what is? I I guess I don't understand the historical, um, historically have other towns said no when we have asked for tuition, is that? I guess I don't understand that, I I mean, have we asked lately and have? What's the histor- what has happened historically?
Oh, so historically with, I mean, so to not confuse it, you're talking about a a child coming from any district other than your own. So it doesn't have to be just within the W N E S U, you're talking about any child coming from any district.
Mm-hmm.
And so therefore, any other district, if they operate an elementary school and they do not have school choice, they do not have to pay. So by having this policy, you're 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 you potentially open yourself up that you're accepting a kid but not going to get tuition.
No, we're saying we will not.
It says here, yeah, we're requiring, we're requiring tuition.
So, so, okay, so if 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 that's the case, then, I mean, you might accept the kid, but the district does not have to pay.
That's correct, and then we would not accept it.
Right, so I did, I just want to be clear, the other, the other piece that I just, it's a caution, but I I think I wasn't here when you had the full reading of this. You you cannot deny a child based on disability status or or anything of that nature. So if you accept a child and a district agrees to pay, there's no stipulation in here for them to pay the special aid costs.
That's correct, that's not in.
So, and the special aid costs are a cost at the SU, yes, you're assessed, but the SU is paying. And so therefore, let's say that student comes into this district, you accept them into this district, we become the local educational agent, and that student needs to go to an out of district independent school. You now, or the SU is responsible for the tuition of that student to go to that independent school, which could be a hundred thousand dollars.
That's all, that's all really interesting, but my question was what historically, when we've asked for tuitions from other towns in our district and maybe outside of the district, have they paid or have we even asked lately?
They they will not pay because they don't have to pay. They they operate their own schools, so why would they pay for a child to go to another school?
Um, and according to this, people will need to pay.
Yes.
You cannot force another district to pay you if they offer a school.
We just won't, we won't accept them then.
I understand, but you're asking the history, the history is they don't like there, uh, the other districts within W N S U will not pay for a student to go unless there's there's been some exceptional reason that it happened.
Right, I guess that's what I'm asking, like, I mean, so say there's bullying going on up in Grafton, that Grafton kid wants to come to us, we say we're happy to take him as long as Grafton pays, and Grafton may say, yeah, you take him, we're having this bullying problem and we'll pay the tuition, and that's that.
Well, I I I would be very honest with you and open that I would discourage Grafton from paying. That opens a very big can of worms um that could cause some repercussions for other districts within RSU.
And what way, why, Andy?
You're opening a a system for if a parent becomes dissatisfied with one building that they can then request, and it creates pressure on those other school districts to pay to to come, so it's a scenario that that Marty just gave, so if a parent feels that their child is being bullied and they, so they say, I want to go to another school, and 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 you say yes, and then you say, well, Grafton, you have to pay, I mean, it's Grafton's responsibility to provide a safe education for that child.
Well, and that's why we wrote this this way, because we don't want to like create a scenario where kids are just willy nilly transferring around. We're tying it to tuition so that we can say yes and still adequately like fund their education. And it and it's hard enough to do it that parents don't do it willy nilly.
So I guess I would, I I guess I would have to advise that if we wanted to have this conversation further, we need to go to executive session.
Okay.
Further to that, there was a case, I was, I drove a kid.
So I I I would very much caution that we're going to continue this conversation that we have in an executive session.
Okay, understood. So uh we can do that, or we can yet again take it up uh at another meeting.
We do it now, we're totally fine.
Well, then we have to go ask people to.
It's it's the cold back TV, so I I will take care of that, that's.
Okay.
But.
I got all, I got time, I'm down.
You've got time, okay, well, all, we we only have um two other items, you know, director's comments and then some discussion about the date of the next um Westminster Board meeting, which is a reorganization meeting, and we can talk about that in the context of all of the post-election reorganization meetings. Um, what's everybody's pleasure, if you, I've heard some. All right, we we may do that, and Liz, do you want to?
Are they off, are we in?
No, we haven't moved into executive session yet, the proposal is that we do so.
Yeah.
We're, so we're not in executive session yet.
I know, so I'm just saying, given that the fact that um we need, we might need to go to an executive session. Sounds like a much longer conversation, is it, it's not?
It won't be long, I just, there's certain things I just can't talk about in public, you know.
I see, that's fine.
Because it would involve a student possibly.
I see.
Right, thank you.
So uh it looks as if the will of the board is to go into an executive session, and we'd invite the principal to stay and be with us for that conversation, so back TV will be back, I would say, in approximately twenty minutes. Uh, and Nicole, the same for you. All right, we are out of executive session, and I think there may be a motion a board member would like to make.
I I move that we accept um our admission of non-resident students of Westminster Community School policy as written.
I second it.
And let me uh take a vote, uh, Margie?
Uh, yes, in fair.
Yes. Charlie?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes, passes, the policy is uh approved, and with that, what are our um remaining two topics, you know, director's comments, and then some discussion about the date and time of the next Westminster School Board um meeting. I think uh, I think I propose that we talk, talk about that before we get director's confidence tonight. So Andy, would you um describe for people the proposal that was made last night?
Yeah, so um we originally, so the seating of the new boards um um happens after the election, and we had originally proposed um having um meetings Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, um and each board would would be seated on each one of those nights, and then the SU, because you're then assigned members to the SU, the SU would meet the next week. Um, and last night, uh, it had been proposed to have all four boards meet on the same day, that for that Monday.
The twenty first, is it?
Right on. March twentieth.
March twentieth.
And 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 meet in succession, so um, you know, start with, uh, trying to get the order, how to get the order.
Suggestion would be Rockingham at five thirty, because they're used to meeting at five thirty, Westminster at six, um, Grafton at six thirty, Athens Grafton, and then the high school at seven.
Correct, and and so we would hold half hour meetings, bang out seating of the, you know, election of the chair, um, other members, and then um just moving to the next meeting and and starting it up, and then um and then we would have the SU meeting on that Wednesday, that exactly, so. Um, we'd have some refreshments and whatnot to to tide people over and stuff like that, and uh, when 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 we first proposed the four days, we didn't even think of it, we consolidated everyone down, but we thought it'd be a good idea to get everyone together too and and.
So in person, yes.
At the high school, and one of the, one of the comments that was made about this idea was really to have all board members, usually some new board members, some, you know, people who've been on for quite a long time, to come and actually meet one another in person, and this organizational meeting, as it's called, you're just going through and you're electing and appointing people to um, you know, chair roles and committees and that kind of thing. And if everybody's there at the same time and we make it um an opportunity to meet one another, it actually sets a great tone for a working relationship for the next year or two.
Yeah.
So uh we had um some enthusiasm for the idea, once we got our heads around the possibility that we can even do it.
Yeah.
But the question to you all is, does that work, would be that Monday night, did we say that's the?
Date again?
March, Monday, March twentieth, and everybody, all elected board members would be encouraged to come, let's say a little after five o'clock for coffee, get to know one another, and then we'd go through a series of convening, Andy convenes each board consecutively, he's the one who convenes it until a chair is elected, and then the chair facilitates the rest of each board's meeting to get the vice chair and clerk, to get the supervisor union board members appointed, to get the committee people, so building grounds and building backgrounds and uh curriculum, whatever, um, all all those things, and it does not take all that long, and we can do it efficiently in thirty minutes, and we will have met everybody who's serving the community in this way. And then the following Wednesday, those people who are appointed to serve on the SU board would meet, and we'd have our first.
Right. So the next, we need to, first of all, down here, it said Wednesday, March twenty third, but it's actually twenty second.
Oh, is it?
So I don't know if that matters, but um, so.
We're we're proposing Monday, March twentieth.
Yep, all.
But for this board specifically, your time would be at six o'clock.
Because that's what we normally, that's what we actually need, uh, so does Athens Grafton, but maybe it's like surrounding this.
And then the next.
So then after that, so what we would do at that, one of the things we do with that board meeting at this organizational meeting is set the schedule for when our meetings are, when our regular scheduled meeting and and and.
For each board, you mean?
Right, and my my proposal that I I talked with a couple other board members about it, is where we set the regular meeting at the end of the week, month, is that we set. regular meeting at the end of the week, month, is that we set the regular meeting at the beginning of the month? Is that clear, yeah?
Yep.
Okay. So, so that's, so, so that's the piece of, of just trying to figure that out.
Okay.
It, it may work that other boards can do it that way, so, um.
What's your rationale for that?
Just trying not to have a meet, a, a week of three meetings.
Aren't you still having a week of three meetings?
No, because if the regular meeting is in, at the beginning, I know it has to use at the end, then it's then it's only the alternates that would happen in the, the ops. But that was just, again, me being selfish, but, I mean.
Well, maybe, maybe a couple of the districts will go at the beginning of the month and maybe.
That's, that's, that's why I just said, I don't think it's that, it's not a, it's not a do or die.
In, in my case, my calendar is pretty much scheduled for the next year. Uh, around a lot of that, but thank you for that. Anyway, for our decision tonight, it looks like that Monday, March twentieth for all of us works as a. Five o'clock for coffee, but we'll, it, yeah, to be there and to be seated and to sit through each of the organizational meetings, but we would not vote except for our meeting at six o'clock. If something came up and you couldn't.
But be there at what time?
I was encouraging five o'clock just to meet people, just to get to know other people.
What we would do is. At the high school.
At the. Yeah, in the big library.
Okay.
What we would do is after elections and we know who, who's been elected. We, we assume everyone here, so I, I, but I'm just talking in generality. We will send an email out to you with all this information attached to it, so.
Okay. And then we decide when our next meetings are like going forward, but, but maybe we'd have another meeting on the twenty third? Cheryl, is that what you're saying?
Supervisory union organizational meeting. And so there would be, just as there is now, three voting members from the Westminster Board who would go with that. Right. And currently it's, uh, Team Karen and I. And that'll be one of the things that we decide at our organizational meeting, who are the people who would represent us at that meeting. But it would be the SU organizational meeting on that Wednesday.
On the Wednesday?
The Wednesday, the twenty second.
And would all of us need to be there for the Wednesday one? I'm, I'm confused.
No, no, that's a supervisory union organizational meeting. And it would be the three designees from Westminster currently, they are, Team Karen and I.
Right, okay. But would we have our normal monthly meeting of this board on Thursday of that week or no?
Oh, no, during, thi- thi- this is, this is the required organizational meeting after a town meeting and town election and you elect your officers, your positions, that kind of thing. And you set your regular meeting schedule. And our next meeting would be typically the following month or two weeks later, uh, whichever we think is needed. Is that clear enough now?
Yeah.
I'm just gonna go with it.
It's all good. So with that, um, and, and we'll put that in the, in the minutes that we've agreed that, uh, the date and time of our next meeting, which is a reorganization of the board, will be Monday, March twentieth. So with that, um, let's just go to director's comments and then we'll be ready to adjourn after, after that. Margie, you can lead us off if you'd like to with director's comments.
Sure, uh, I want to thank Liz as always for doing a fantastic job at the school. Everybody is loving the winter sports. Everybody's loving Reading Buddies, Studio Y, all the programming that you do is fantastic. It's really awesome. Um, there was, you know, when we had to get our thirty signatures to get back on the ballot, um, I had some very interesting conversations with people because they want to give you, they want me to give them their spiel uh, to get on the ballot. And I guess, uh, not having anywhere else to talk about this, I guess I thought I'd say it now. Some people are still upset about the Westminster West building being open, even though, you know, like, you know, when it was closed, we thought it was closed, but then, you know, now it's Studio Y. I love Studio Y, but there is some community dissent on whether we should be maintaining that building. So just wanted to let you guys know that. Um, there was one comment about politics in school, didn't like having politics in school. That one I felt like was a little, just that's, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't really buy it, but people are saying that. And then the third comment was, um, there is a little bit of movement that people want to see kids at town meeting. And that if there's any way that we can encourage not just like community members, but also kids to be coming to town meeting. And I think Liz, you and I had sort of talked about that, just we can't require teachers to be coming on a Saturday, but just amongst ourselves, having, like, bringing our kids to town meeting and making it truly, tru- truly trying to make it a community event. I think that would be awesome. I do think that's a really cool thing and encourages our children to be involved. Um, overall, awesome job, guys. Thank you, thank you, thank you, as always.
Thank you.
That's it.
All right, Karen?
Yes, well, um, just because you raised it, uh, Margie, I've talked to a lot of people in West West, actually, who were much more in support of keeping that school, who feel that it's actually clear ogle's be that's at work with, because of so much art that's taking place with Janelle there. And how happy they are that that's happening. So I, on the other hand, there are those that are, you know, are very happy about that being there when I get to talk about amazing work that's done. Um, and Liz, obviously, thank you so much. I, your reports are always alive for me. It's great. And thank you. I think that was a great discussion really for me about the policy and thinking it through and and being, um, astute about, about it as we move forward, but I'm really glad that we were able to pass that. So thank you all very much. And thank you, Andy, for your, um, what do you call it? Sort of devil advocates and also, that was good. Thank you very much.
Karen?
Uh, so, I do everything, thank you, good Liz. And just, uh, I be quite often, I just want to be around the kids. Um, uh, good discussion, a little bit of friction there, but I don't think that's okay. It works out. I think we listen to each other and made our choices and that's great. But thank you, Andy, for being a, for being the voice of, you know, the other opposing view. Um, actually, the demographic in, in West West is changing. There may be an need for it in those real school where they're going to say more of a children over there.
Yeah.
Um, so I, I agree, we should be ready with, you know, an answer to that, uh, question. Why, do you know why? What's the benefit of it all at the term meeting and at the information meeting? I, I, I imagine it's the only version of its, thing of its kind in the state. I, I kind of imagine it doesn't like it anywhere else, is it?
Not that I know of.
It's absolutely amazing. So I love it and I would support it and hope in support of it.
I, I think.
You're done, yeah, sorry.
I, I, I think I would only add around the discussion of the building in Westminster West that whereas there are some who ask about why it's not closed entirely. In my experience, that's a real minority and there are a stronger number of people who would really like to see it. A, a primary school again, would really like to see it, a school again, um, and uh, in my view, we're certainly very fortunate right now that it's a great location for an integrated arts experiential ed and learning program that serves all of the children of Westminster community. Kate Drew Six, and it's, um, and everything we hear about it, we know from the evidence as well, is a, is a great experience. But with all of that, we'll see you all in a new year for board service after the election. Except that we'll have a planning meeting coming up. And touch with you about our specific plans for just an informational meeting for the voting public on Saturday, uh, February twenty five from nine to eleven here at the cafeteria in the Westminster Center School. So with that, we'll adjourn our meeting, if I may have a motion to do so, at seven fifty one. All right, thanks, everybody. Good night.